Let's begin.
Good evening. It's six o'clock and we're going to start our meeting. I'm going to do the roll call. Madam Mayor, Janine James.
Here.
Councilman Trowinger.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Councilman Goldsmith. Councilwoman Brian Ward here. If you will join me in, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we will approve the meeting minutes from the month of June. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the meetings for June, the month of June?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the month of June.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The meeting minutes have been approved. So tonight, is there anyone that signed up for public comment?
Madam Mayor, pro temp, no one in person has signed up to speak and no one online appears to be prepared to speak either.
Okay. So we have two proclamations tonight, the National Night Out proclamation and the National Traffic Awareness proclamation. Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins from Ward four, I'm going to read the, this proclamation. A National Night Out, August the 2nd, 2022, whereas the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police, community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighbors neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back, back a true sense of community. And whereas National Night Out showcases the vital importance of police, community partnerships and citizen involvement. And whereas National Night Out provides an opportunity for neighbors in La Plata to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities and military bases worldwide on the first Tuesday in August. Now therefore, we, the town councilor of the town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim August 2nd, 2022 is National Night Out in the town of La Plata, Maryland. And all neighbors are encouraged to participate in or host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events and visits, visits from emergency personnel. And that would be signed by the mayor and the town council.
Thank you. So we have our recipients for our National Night Out grants that's presented by the town of La Plata. We have, the grants were extended to Clark's Run, Hawthorne Green, and we have Joanne Van Blarkin and Becky Harden here to receive those grants. Steeplechase, we have Pat Vieira here to receive that grant. Nicholas Shivda from Hickory Ridge and Washington Square, Lori Sommers. So if you don't mind, please come forward and we'll present you with your grants. That's a great looking bunch out there. Thank you, guys.
What's the dessert this time?
We're doing the ice cream thing again.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we have the proclamation for National Traffic Awareness.
Got it. National Traffic Awareness Month is in August of 2022. Proclamation reads, whereas the children in our community will soon be returning to school, walking to and waiting at school bus stops, and many will also be walking to their schools. Whereas it is a shared responsibility to take every action possible to protect the children and all the pedestrians in our community, including educating pedestrians and drivers alike on ways to prevent traffic-related injury and death. And whereas the National Security Council identifies speeding as a factor in 29% of all traffic fatalities in 2020. And whereas every year, over 3,000 pedestrian-involved crashes occur on Maryland roads. And whereas the council of the town of La Plata is concerned about the safety of the children and all the pedestrians in this town and wishes to help ensure a safe pedestrian environment by promoting public awareness about and enforcement of posted speed limits in our neighborhoods and throughout the entire community. And whereas the La Plata Police Department will be promoting public awareness of this issue and educating drivers who exceed the posted speed limits in our neighborhoods and community about the danger their speeding poses to children and all pedestrians. Now therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2022, National Traffic Awareness Month in the town of La Plata. And all drivers are encouraged to be aware of and comply with posted speed limits on streets within the community.
Thank you, Councilman Trowinger.
Uh, Councilman, can I just make a brief comment on that proclamation if I may? Obviously, this is important to all of us and I just want to add that I've reached out to the organization called Complete Streets, which is part of Smart Growth America, and I've requested an agenda item that they make a present, a virtual presentation at our, I believe it's September 13th work session agenda. So I just wanted to, I apologize, I should have sent you the email earlier, but I didn't do that. But so hopefully I've got coordinated with, they'll present a presentation to us on August, September 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Now for the La Plata Police Department Monthly Report, Chief Schinner.
Thank you. Sorry. Chief Schinner, La Plata Police Department. This month, two of our officers received a life-saving award. They responded to the call for an unresponsive female. She was 35 years old and had recently given birth to a newborn. We looked at the body cam footage. Our guys gave CPR. The medics were able to push some medicine and hook up an AED. Both the emergency room doctors and the medics were on the scene. A tribute to this lady still being alive today because of the fast actions and following the training of our police officer or following the training that they were given. Our officer saved this individual's life. They have since been in contact with the family a couple of times. So she's expected to make a full recovery, which is great. Police Department received accreditation, re-accreditation in Chicago last week. We're very proud of that. We were there. We answered questions that the commission had about our report. Our report was called Clean. We got a unanimous vote for unconditional re-accreditation for four years. So we're proud of that. We're also proud of the Stuff a Squad Car event that Sergeant Plater hosted. There are actually kids having lunches right now because of his efforts, which means a lot to us. Future things, National Night Out, as we just said, is August 2nd. We will be staging at the American Legion at 1700 hours, 5 o'clock, if anybody wants to join us there. I don't know, the sheriff's department usually has a special guest come down and kind of speak before we go out. And then our block party is August 13th from noon to 3:00 at Caroline Park. So if you want to join us there, you are more than welcome to. Are there any questions about our report?
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Again, congratulations on the accreditation. You already answered one of my questions, how long it's good for, so thank you. I'm just curious, I noticed that you provided information for three years in tracking and I was curious, is it seasonal that we've had an increase in incidents at Walmart? Is that economic hardships or is it seasonal or?
It ebbs and flows. It depends on the, the security manager, loss prevention people. How many they have, how bad the last inventory was or how good the previous inventory was. So the Walmart, like with most jurisdictions, Walmarts keep you busy. There's, there's actually articles that are written to police chiefs and sheriffs about the high cost of policing Walmart.
Thank you. And again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Chief Schinner, on being unanimously elected as the second vice president of the Maryland's Chief of Police Association.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you so much for all you do for us.
Appreciate it.
Can I, can I chime in for a sec?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. First of all, Chief, congratulations on the Kalia re-accreditation. You, your team did amazing. Just to watch how smoothly it went. I hope it always goes that smoothly and thank you for being proactive and making sure that our police department has all the tools needed to perform safety for our residents. I have one question about your report and I've noticed an increase in shootings. Do you know what, what is going on? The last month, we've had three shootings, two at Patuxent Court and one over there at Phoenix Run. Is it the same people? Is it, and what's going on? Can you shed any light on that?
Well, I can, I can share that we have some operations that we have planned to work along a couple of our allied law enforcement partners to address it. Excuse me. What we're seeing here is what we're seeing around the region. Gun violence is everywhere and most chiefs and sheriffs are at a loss to explain why it has gotten so bad so quickly. Usually you find that it is tied to the drug trade somehow, some way, but not everything we're dealing with is, is tied to that. So I know the Chiefs of Police Association, this is a subject that we're speaking about whether you're a very large police department or a small police department. It's on our radar and we're working close with our allied law enforcement partners to address it as best we can.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And again, congratulations on Kalia and for your being elected as a second BP.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now we're here, updates from our planning department. Janine Harrington.
Good evening, council. For the planning department, I won't go through all of my report. I will do some brief overview. So we have, for our development updates, we did issue the grading permit for 109 Charles Street, which is located just above Howard Street. We issued a total of 51 building permits in the last month. We issued two occupancy permits, one for 105 Centennial Street, Suite A for Meridian Fitness and 115 Lagrange Avenue, Suite 102 for CC's Hair Salon. We had quite a bit of code enforcement over the past month. And as you can see, our rental licenses for 2022 is now up to 103 that were submitted. For future meetings, as noted, we have National Night Out on August 2nd, so we did move the Planning Commission meeting to August 3rd. We do have a public hearing for the Steeplechase Master Site Development Plan Amendment as well as the revisions to the AgroCopia preliminary plat and the Mallards Pond preliminary plat. And I do want to make an announcement on here that Heritage Green, the owners of Heritage Green, D.R. Horton, have decided to change the name of the subdivision from Heritage Green to Pine Grove. So I'm making the transition to Pine Grove and putting formerly Heritage Green as I move forward with future submissions. And we also have Design Review Board on August 10th, where we'll review the Smeco Streetlight recommendation. And tentatively, we're looking to have the Charles County Library submission on. For matters of information, we are having our Urban Tree Canopy Study Community Outreach Meeting tomorrow, July 27th at 6:00 p.m. here at the town hall. So hopefully we'll get a lot of people to come out and join us and give us their opinions on trees. Still working on our development capacity analysis. We did sign the authorization for the new permit software at Municity and we are starting the initial setup with them. And then still proceeding forward with some draft code revisions. We've had some conversations with the Planning Commission and still have some more conversations to have about the adequate public facilities ordinance and other ones that we have in. And that's all I have unless you have any specific questions for me.
Do you have any questions for?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Thank you for the report, Director Harrington. It's interesting that the DRB were reviewing the library site. Are there, it's probably a premature question, but are there any issues with the, with the draft site plan that you've seen so far?
So the Design Review Board is not looking at the site plan. They're just looking at the building facade. But they have pointed out a few concerns that were raised at the last meeting when we brought it forward as a concept. They were concerned about having the kind of book delivery bay doors on the side of the building that was facing Washington Avenue. And they preferred the more traditional design, whereas I think the county has indicated that the traditional design that they had proposed is probably going to be out of the budget range. So we'll need to, we have a meeting, staff has a meeting with the county tomorrow to discuss the steps moving forward with the library. So that'll be one of the topics of discussion.
Thank you. And just as a observation or comment for me, I, excuse me, I'm hoping that there'll be walkability to the site, you know, from, from Washington Avenue and also, I guess, from Maple Street as well. My second, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do have proposals for the sidewalk continuation and that will be part of the Planning Commission review.
Thank you. And then you answered one of my questions because I noticed the signs for quote Heritage Green were different and I thought, what happened? So you already answered that question. Are there any ongoing issues with the intersection construction that's going on at Willow and Charles Street?
We have not received any recent complaints about the intersection. I know that they did close off the access at Caroline Drive due to issues that were being, several complaints that we had received. And I know our Director of Operations was doing a great job of keeping an eye on that. So they did close off that entrance and they are trying to focus more on getting the Charles Street access up and running. But we haven't received any recent complaints on that.
And then, thank you. And then finally, maybe this is off topic, but anything to report on the radio station walkway project in terms of design submission to the state?
I actually do not know the status of that. It's kind of gotten out from my realm. I know that Laura, our planner two, is working with Meaden Hunt and I believe Brent is as well. I'm not sure if he has any specific updates on that.
I really do not have an update. Jamie was in the office, I believe, was it last week, I believe. We discussed various projects that were going on in and around town. But I do not recall any specific update to that process, other than they are continuing to work. And it may be the right-of-way stage that they're evaluating if and when we'll need to acquire right-of-way as part of the, the plan.
And then just say, Director Harrington, thanks for your, you and your staff's work on the adequate public facilities ordinance and then the development capacity analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor James.
Thank you. Have you advertised yet for the Inspector One position that is vacant?
We have not re-advertised yet. That's something that's been on the, my list to discuss with Michelle. But it's just, it hasn't been a hot topic with everything else that we've got going on.
Oh, and I know you all could use the, the help. Aaron's doing a fabulous job. Public hearing on Steeplechase on the amended site development plat. I know that they are doing phase two and phase three. What triggered a public hearing for, are they looking at the whole master site development plan again because two and three are slated to come in? Can you give me just a little insight on that one?
Absolutely. So the original master site development plan for the development was approved in 2005. We have published the agenda for the August 3rd Planning Commission meeting to show the documentation for that submission. And I did include the previous master site development plan so everyone could see that. When they got that original approval, the, the site was zoned mud and it had an overlay of TND, which was traditional development overlay. And that approval was only for phases one and two. So the, it was always known that they would have to come back at a certain point to get approval, reapproval for the master site development plan to include phase three. Now in 2018, we changed the zoning to planned development because they had reached a certain point of, you know, getting through most of their construction. And so along with Heritage Green, or I mean, not Heritage Green, AgroCopia and Hickory Ridge, they were changed to planned developments and their kind of guiding documents are serving as their approvals. For the zoning code, under the Master Site Development Plan Amendment process, it does state that an amendment to a master site development plan shall be reviewed similar to the way that a, an actual new master site development plan would be reviewed. And that includes a planning, yeah, Planning Commission public hearing as well as a town council public hearing and approval by resolution.
Okay. Thanks. So will AgroCopia have to go through that with their revised preliminary plat sometime down the road?
Not with the amendments that they're proposing. So the, basically with AgroCopia, and then I'm trying, I've explained it in my staff report, which I think is already visible on the August 3rd agenda. They're not changing anything significant. So we have to go to the planned development section of the zoning code. And it states that if there's a significant change, then it may have to go through a larger process or get a waiver. And for a minor amendment, again, there's a, there's another process for that. They're not changing anything as far as the number of units, the types of units, the density, anything that we would consider kind of a major change. It was determined that under Section 7A, which we were getting ready to do a final plat for, the original drawings provided by Bolton, and again, it was back in the 2005, 2006 range, did not line up correctly. So it's basically just a correction of the lot layout. But they'll maintain the same lot numbers, the same unit types. Everything else will remain exactly the same. It's just showing the updated configuration of those lots based on the development.
Fantastic. And then the last question is, I know that we concluded the public hearing for Hawthorne Yards and the hub. Do you know when they will be coming back in front of us?
I believe at the, I do not know about, I think that's up to scheduling. I think from the last public hearing, I heard August 16th.
Okay. I was just confirming that that might be still on schedule. Thank you so much.
They're still on schedule, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harrington.
Sorry. Director Harrington, can you tell us a little bit more about our Tree Canopy meeting tomorrow night? I know there are a lot of residents in becoming more of a tree city than a name only. How does, what does the agenda look like and what does that look like as far as what we're going to be talking about tomorrow night?
Yes, so the, as mentioned before, we did the tree inventory and we got a grant through the National Wildlife Federation with the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay. And we chose the Davie Resource Group to do the actual survey and inventory of the trees in downtown, throughout the town. So tomorrow is going to be an overview presentation by the Davie Resource Group and the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay will also be there. They will go over the results of the tree inventory and they will start to look at the trends that they're noticing in our canopy. They're noticing that there's a lot of newer trees rather than older trees as far as our street trees are concerned. So they're going to kind of go over what they found in their inventory and start to get some commentary and input from the public as to what they like to see, you know, throughout the town. Are there any areas for priority planting? We do have some money, I believe, with the grant to actually plant trees. So it's kind of looking at getting some community input on where they want to see trees, see if there's any private property owners that want to get trees planted on their yards, those types of things. So it's kind of an overview of that tree inventory and then getting public input for how they want to see the town move forward with their, their trees.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Director Harrington? Thank you, Director Harrington. Thank you, Director Saul.
Are there any questions or would you like me to summarize first? I'll be happy to summarize. As you can see from our report, we did get one load of our trash cans, which were ordered last June. So we were a year getting the new inventory and we have been in the process of delivering those out to the residents. One of the challenges we've found was that we weren't able to get any 35 gallon, the small trash cans on this order. But we did get the big ones. We are, we still have another order in. We ordered another 400 back in January and we're trying to work with them to find out when we'll get that next 400. Because with the growth that we're expecting, we're going to need a lot of cans and we don't like to have residents come in and have to go out and buy a can and then turn around and say, okay, now we're going to switch a can and then they have an extra can sitting there. So it is important to keep a, a large inventory and so we're hopeful to keep that moving forward. One of the things I will point out is that we are moving forward with a communication plan for the install of the four-way stop at Glen Albin and St. Mary's Avenue. So that will be coming out and the install will be a one-day install on August 25th. So a month from now, we're going to be installing that four-way stop. Today, we hosted the pre-bid meeting for the upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant and bids are expected back on September 2nd. So we will be receiving those bids and that's for the modification to MLE1 over at the treatment plant. Interestingly enough, getting, once we get the contract, we hope to be bringing that contract to you, we would hope in October. It might be November because we have to get USDA approval from that first and things don't seem to move very quickly there. But we would hope to get that to you in October so that we can start the process with whomever the contractor is to getting shop drawings together so we can get all those approvals to make sure that we sign off so that the manufacturing can start. Because it looks like on most of the equipment, it's at least a nine-month lead time. So it's a three-month lead time to get the shop drawings and a nine-month lead time to get the equipment. And then we can basically start construction. There's very little construction that we can do beforehand. And so we're probably looking at 18 months from the time we get our contract. And then we have to provide one year of data to the state of Maryland before they'll give us the plant upgrade. So they're requiring us to give them a year's worth of data. So we're probably looking at somewhere around January of 2025 or possibly even later than that, maybe even April of 2025 before we would get the first. that, maybe even April of 2025 before we would get the first. Now, that being said, we still have a good amount of capacity in the plant that's still there at the one and a half million gallons. But the farther we go on, the more that capacity is going to be used up. And Pine Grove, or whatever the new name is, is expecting to start building houses in September to October of this year. So it does look like that the previously named Heritage Green will begin building houses this fall. So things are progressing there. Councilman Jenkins had a question about the entrance. We did close Caroline Drive. We had had some issues there that we've spoken about in the past. The trucks are coming in through. But one of the challenges is the site has been extremely muddy. And so, you know, they're having to do a lot of cleaning out there on Route Six. That was clearly one of the challenges on Caroline Drive that I didn't like at all. And so having the mud is a major issue. It it is one of the challenges we've had down there. We've been working very diligently on the utilities. There are two force mains going up the hill. There's a major water line going up the hill and there's the major gravity line coming down the hill. We've we've got two, the old force main that's that's been in since Willow Lane was built. They put the other new one in and we've now switched to the new one that they just put in. And now they have to relocate the gravity, I mean, excuse me, the force main going up the hill, the old force main, because it's actually too close to the water line. On the on the plans, it showed that they would be 10 feet apart. They put the other one in, but as we the closer, the farther we got up the hill, the more it got closer and closer. By state code, they have to be 10 feet apart. So they're going to have to relocate that line. So that's some additional work that they'll have to do. We had a big meeting on that Monday when I returned. So we've agreed to get that redone. They are working diligently on, as you've probably noticed, they've put the sidewalks in behind the existing curb and gutter and the existing sidewalk. They still have to do some things at Bill Ekman's house where they have to build a concrete wall there to be able to grade to the wall, to raise the grade some. But we're hopeful here. Their goal by September is to have that entrance in place. And, you know, we hope that to get that moving forward. One of the challenges down there has been stability of the soils. The soils have not been, the compaction has not been where it needs to be. And so they're going to have to bring in soil cement. They've been, as you probably noticed, they're greatly undercutting the area over there and they're going to have to soil cement that soil and then turn around and bring in good fill. So they're probably going to have to bring in two to three feet of good compactable fill on top of soil cement. So there's quite a lot of things that they're trying to do to overcome some of the challenges to get into the entrance there. But they still have to be on target for September for that. The utilities have now, as I indicated, progressed up to Caroline Drive. I am down there every day, several times a day, working on the progress because, of course, we do all the inspections for all of those utilities. And it's very important that we do that, you know, and make sure that all of those are inspected before we and to stay on top of that throughout the process so that it doesn't become something at the end where, you know, we're trying to fix something underneath the asphalt. So that's where we are with Heritage Green. The I I indicated about the pre-bid today. I wanted to bring you up to speed. The sewer line over at Southwest Quadrant, which comes up right beside A and S School, is progressing well. We're up to the top of the hill with the pipes. We've set the two manholes. And hopefully in the next few weeks, the jack and bore will begin. We've, as always with every project, we've had some challenges. This week, we found a water line that we did not know existed. And so we've got to try to figure out how we can relocate that either temporarily or permanently to get it out of the way so that the bore pit can be placed on each side of Route Six. But we will be moving forward with that boring under Route Six, hopefully very soon, so that we can be out of the school's way when they get ready to reopen at the end of August. So it's it's a real challenge. We're progressing and we feel like, at least for the sewer line, we'll be doing well. But they have a separate boring contractor who's coming in to actually do the boring under Route Six. And so that's going to be a challenge for us. One of the things we've done, Rosewick Crossing up there, the new shopping center, we made the water line connection. So we did make the connection the other day onto the 16-inch. So we made an eight-inch tap onto the big 16 up there off of that line coming off the the water line, coming off of the water tower at Rosewick Crossing. And we made that connection already. We've placed a hydrant there. We also today met with them this afternoon and we located the two, the water and the sewer lines underneath of Rosewick Road up on the end closest to 301. And we talked about how we were going to make those connections to that line, which goes across to the Rosewick Pump Station. Interestingly enough, I would pass along to you, they told me today that the Audi, which is actually under construction right now, they're slated to open November 7. So I was very surprised at that. In my own personal opinion, having been in the construction industry, they better move along pretty quickly if they want to be open by November 7. But they seem to indicate that Audi was they, the same general contractor that's building this one here is the same one that has built over 100 Audis around and they know what their timing requirements are. So I, you know, I I think they're certainly capable of doing it. But, you know, the challenge with any construction today is really getting the materials on site and that is, in some cases, extremely difficult. We did have the pre-design meeting with the engineers out at Tillman Lake. And so that's progressing. They're working on that Coastal Resources, which was the contract that you all approved. So we're going, working well there. And with that, I'll leave you alone and answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. Thank you, Director Saul, and thank you for the work that was done by your team on Wales Drive. That was a precarious situation, to say the least. So the photos are always helpful that you put in the reports to show how how much of a difference some work from some skilled people can can make. As it relates to the King's Grant situation with getting documents signed by residents going through their attorney to our attorney so that some work can finally get done on some of these, again, places where it's causing a lot of problems and potentially damaging property values and other sorts of things. Where are we at with those? Are they starting to stream in or is that stalled in any way?
We're, well, we, interestingly enough, here again, it's always a matter of priorities and we have numerous different priorities. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my priority list here to show, but I I think you've seen that priority list of where we are. And clearly, the the major project at the intersection of Wales and Suffolk is is by far our top priority at this point and we want to get that. Mr. Posey, that owns the MedStar unit out here, if you'll notice, Kent Avenue has been dug up this week. The sewer line failed at the MedStar Health Unit there. And he grabbed my concrete crew from Mr. Austin to come in there and get that as an emergency fix because they had to take all the steps out. We ended up having to put an entire new line in there. The the lines were all degraded. And so we made a whole new tap on our main out there. And so the concrete crew did get, and that's kind of what happens. I'm working with them to try and, you know, Bryce has one concrete crew and is, you know, they're all literally have been working right there on that fix for that building this week. As soon as they're finished, they're supposed to pour the concrete for the new steps at that building on Tuesday and they will be coming back to us and staying in King's Grant until we can get some of the issues remedied over there. But that has honestly been some of the challenge. He, every time we get him and it was like, to be honest, we did the one at the end of Wales Drive, which the bits are repaired at the end and he fixed that. But then he was supposed to be back and move right up the street, but he ended up pulling them for another job. And so that's one of the challenges that we face is that we try to get people to work with us, but trying to get people scheduled in right now because they're all short of help and that kind of thing. It is a challenge and but hopefully next Wednesday, we will have them and, you know, we can move forward on some of these projects.
Are we are we getting what we need from our residents there? Are we still lagging on on some of those documents as far as the easements and everything?
I would honestly have to check with Mr. Scott as their HOA attorney in that to see. I think things are actually better. At one time, we were requiring not only them to sign, but we were requiring the mortgage company. And so we were making it pretty hard on the residents because of our requirements. I think we've relaxed some of those requirements and made it easier. And so I do think Mr. Scott has been progressing on that. But let me assure you, as you saw from the list, there are literally, I think, 80-some work orders in the system for just King's Grant alone. And most of those we can take care of with the easements that we now have. So these aren't things that should hold us up at this point. We may not be able to fix some of them because we're waiting for private easement documents. But for the most part now, with what we got signed back in June and what got recorded, I think we're in good shape. And it's now just a matter of trying to get materials and get contractors in to do the work.
This might be a naive question, but if if we have contractors that are pulled from jobs that we have that they know about, is it worthwhile to, and I know we're limited in that some contractors are short-staffed, but is it is it worthwhile to expand our network of contractors? I mean, right?
And I mean, to be honest, we have had multiple contractors work for us. APF Construction, who's done a lot of the sidewalk around here, have been so busy that they haven't been interested in our business. You know, to be honest, Bryce has been good and we have an ongoing contract with him with pricing that's already been pre-approved. So, you know, he's been very good for us and we try to get other contractors involved. We've been trying, but to be honest, they're so busy and they're so short-staffed that it has been a challenge. And you're correct. I mean, it, you know, trying to get more people is somewhat problematic. It's it's not an easy fix. You know, like in these boxes over there, not only do you need the concrete contractor, but you have to get them all confined space certified because you have to put them down in a confined space. And that creates other issues.
I mean, do other municipalities have this problem, like Bowie and Prince Frederick or wherever else where they've got somebody lined up and they're pulling out and they've got eighty residents waiting on work orders?
Absolutely. Stormwater, stormwater is a major problem for every governmental entity today, whether it's the county, whether it's towns, whether it's any municipality or even the state. You know, look at the failures along 301. You know, we went down and fixed the pipe, but that's on a list of thousands of pipes that they need to replace. You know, to be honest, all of the stormwater piping for many years was just like over in King's Grant. King's Grant, in the grand scheme of things, is not a, an old neighborhood, but it's 30-plus years old for the most part. And 30 years on corrugated metal pipe is proving to be old, especially with our soils here in La Plata. It has been heating them up. And to be honest, if, you know, when we created the stormwater utility, we assumed that that would be the best way to handle this. But we were very small and we were a very small municipality. We didn't go to any of the HOAs and ask them to take and pay money into our fund. We've been taking it on ourselves. If you remember, up until 2013, all of those fixes over in King's Grant would have been on the HOA. And because we created that utility and did all of that in 2013, the town then took on that expense and took on all of those projects. So up until that point, we just really didn't do it. And so then, since 2013, we're, you know, working to get all the easements. And to be honest, the the maintenance had been really not very good up until that point because the town, you know, for the most part, wasn't responsible for it until 2013. And because of the amount of or the lack thereof of maintenance prior to that point, we had all this delayed maintenance and now we have, you know, literally hundreds of projects that we need to address. And it's going to take some time. It's not, that it's not on our radar. We're trying to do that. We did wait till July 1 of this year because we're going to use ARPA monies to do a lot of our stormwater fixes and we've got those, you know, to be honest, all those MS4 projects that we talked to you about and that we've been explaining to you about weren't even part of the maintenance issue of just going out and doing the fixes in King's Grant. So it just, you know, the the MS4 requirements have added to our problem in that situation. But you're you're correct. I mean, we need more contractors. We are working on that. We're trying to get people and hopefully, you know, we can increase that in the long run.
Chairman Trelinger, if I can. Bobby and I have also talked about sort of pre-qualifying contractors, which I think gets to what you're in a, you know, in the event that we have an emergency or we have smaller jobs. One of the issues we're up against is that a lot of our jobs, if you look at them individually, are not large jobs and the contractors typically chase the larger jobs. But we've also, Bobby and I have talked about maybe packaging some of these projects together. And once we get a procurement officer in here trying to put them out for procurement with a specific scope of work to maybe knock out 10 of these projects with one contractor, which may make us more attractive to the to the bidders.
Yeah, the idea was on-call contractors so that we we have a bunch of on-calls and that was absolutely the case.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Director Saul. Great job on hiring four new techs and one Assistant Director of Operations. I look forward to meeting the rest of the gang. I met one of them at a concert, very nice young man. My only question to you in reading your report, it indicated that door tagging resumed on July 19 and ordered to move the needle, we'll have to begin issuing cutoff notices to residential accounts in small geographic areas. And we're still awaiting council approval. Has this come before us and have we neglected to take action? Or are you, in your report, asking us to take action? I don't recall this coming before us.
I I don't know the specifics on that, Mayor. I hate to be unaware. I I'm not aware of why anything from that standpoint would require action. I I'm not honestly sure. I I see that, you know, that that where it's still waiting council approval. I'm not sure what that. I I think that is maybe a misunderstanding and I'll have to make sure that our group does that. I I think this goes back to council giving approval to do cutoffs. You know, we we had done away with that during COVID and that nature, but we're back to doing cutoffs as we normally would. And we are working with finance when finance tells us when the cutoffs are. We, you know, from our standpoint, we facilitate what the finance department tells us. Finance sends out the bills. They have the dates where we do the cutoffs. They provide us with the lists and we do them. I don't believe that we're awaiting any kind of council approval at this point and I'll make sure that gets corrected because I don't know why that would be in there because there's nothing associated with that unless, Brent, you know something that I don't from from the finance department. I'm not aware of anything as far as finance is concerned that would require council approval. We we just, the operations department We, we, we just, the operations department just carries it out. We went out, we go out and hang the door tags, but the, the houses that get, um, the, the list comes out of finance, the finance department gives us the list as who's delinquent, who to cut off, who to turn back on. All of those are, are finance issues that, you know, we, we just carry out the work.
Uh, and I just want you to know, we are reading your reports.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I, 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 as I, I was away last week when this one got mailed in, and so I was not, um, I did read it, uh, today, and I, I didn't even pick up on that part of it, but I certainly see it and understand.
Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Again, thanks for the report. Again, uh, comprehensive, just two quick questions. Um, were there any issues when you had to make the adjustments for the, I guess it was a trash pickup or recycling pickup that started in certain neighborhoods, uh, last week?
Um, not that I'm aware, Councilman Jenkins. I was not in town last week, so I wasn't aware of anything. They would have generally have said any, said something to me, but I don't, I did not hear anything, so generally no news is good news.
Yeah.
In that situation. Um, but I, uh, I will certainly check and let you know if there were. I'm, I'm not aware of anything.
And, and then just, just a generalized question that I guess I'm going to keep asking at certain times, but any, and I know you're away, uh, just, just to think about, uh, any progress with respect to the state and the county on the water issue or the groundwater appropriation permit, or is that something for a different time?
Um, I think the, uh, general answer at this point is no. Um, the last meeting that we had, as you were aware, with the county, the county said, we're going to have to, um, go back to the state. Uh, we have alerted the state to the fact that the negotiations had kind of broken off with the county. Um, I have been dealing with county staff on my own, um, about how we make the connection out at Tillman.
Yeah.
Um, I did provide them with access to our GIS, um, and allowed them to have that so that they could look at their water modeling using ours because they indicated that, um, they needed to, to create a model in order to verify back that the connection won't be a, a problem for them. The, um, the challenge, uh, for us is we're trying to move forward with infrastructure.
Right.
We agreed to pay for the water line, um, coming all the way down St. Charles Parkway into that, um, entrance to, um, the neighborhood there at the, um, that adjoins Tillman Lake. That line is complete. The sixteen-inch line has been put in, and it is all the way down there. I have been working with Lennar, the owner of that track, to design in the twelve-inch line through that system over to Laurel Springs. Um, Rick Barnas has been good enough to continue that work so that we keep the twelve-inch line going through that neighborhood. He has been tracking his expense, and at some time would like to have an agreement between the town and the county to say that he's going to get reimbursed for those expenses and that the twelve-inch line that goes through the neighborhood will be taken care I honestly don't know what to tell them because I had assumed we would have had a deal with the county by this point, but it just has been a challenge. And, uh, I, uh, I don't have to tell any of you that, you know, some of the challenges that we faced going through that, um, they, um, I think the state and the town have been in reasonable agreement as to what the agreement should reflect. Uh, and, uh, that just hasn't been what the county wants. Um, my personal opinion is that it's honestly going to have to wait till after November, and we have new elected officials in place because I don't think prior to the election that anybody wants to rock the boat. And so that's my personal opinion, if you wanted to ask that. But I think that after November, probably after January, when a new governor is sworn in and we have a new, um, secretary at MDE, and we have some new players up there, that, you know, things will be readdressed in that fashion. That's my, I, I think that's kind of the opinion. Uh, I think the county has been in kind of the same realm, taking, they didn't want to create any political waves in the situation prior to the election. And so I believe that everyone has just said, let's wait till after the election to deal with this, and that way we don't create any waves. So then, that, that's my assumption. And I, I haven't pushed it other than the infrastructure issues and trying to move forward with the infrastructure because clearly making that connection at Tillman benefits not only us, but to be honest, right off the bat, it primarily benefits the county. Because we won't need that water for several years, but the county could definitely use that water at subdivisions like Allenwood.
Right.
Uh, and, and, and some of the ones down at Bell Outon and Chapel Point. So they would actually be the beneficiary of a connection more so than we are.
Right. Thank you again for the report. Thank you.
Michelle.
I was curious to think they, last week, so I checked with your, um, admin and director of public works, no questions last week, and there were no issues. The contractor did, um, the flyers on all the recycling cans and the communication, so.
Yeah.
Pretty well. Having that in place.
Yeah, I mean, I did see some of the signs of some of the neighborhood. I was out doing things and.
Yeah.
I saw, that was great.
And I apologize. I wasn't in town, so I don't, I can't answer that issue.
But, but, uh, this might have brought up a great point, and you mentioned earlier about, um, you're going to do a campaign about the intersection of the four-way stop. A- and again, I'm, I'm probably beating a dead horse, but, but that kind of advance notice on everything we do goes a long way to quell the unknown because when folks see something and it's right out of the blue, that's a very negative reaction. And so when we do these campaigns to inform folks, they still may not be happy, but at least they, they know it's coming. So thank you for that. Thank you.
And I, and I would just point out that the council was very good to us in adding positions this year, which will allow us to have more staff to be able to do some of the things that we need to do to be able to stay on top of, um, more of the social media and the things from an administrative standpoint. Um, it's hard enough to stay on top of the operational pieces, but we are, um, in the process of hiring a new assistant director for administration, which their job will be to focus on procurements, to focus on social media and putting out and working on communications plans. Because to be honest, uh, you know, those of us that are so busy on the operational pieces in that situation, you know, w- we're growing more from the small little town that we were to really a, 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 a larger town that requires, you know, in, in today's world, more things, which requires more bodies. And so, um, we're in the process of doing that. Um, I, uh, Jeff and I went over the new positions, and we're advertising for ten new positions right now that were all approved in this year's budget. We're moving those forward. Um, you know, we, we've been making some hires already, but we were waiting for the new fiscal year, and hopefully we can do a better job of communicating those things out.
Director Stahl, I just have one question for you. So with your four, um, public works techs and your assistant director of operations, where does this put you in terms of staffing? Forget the positions that were approved for this fiscal year, but where does that put you with the?
We currently, with this, with the five that we just hired, that puts us at twenty-nine. Um, we have approved in this year's budget forty, so we're currently at twenty-nine. And, uh, we are hoping to hire the next, uh, group of employees to get up closer to the forty.
My question was more, you lost staff, and you've been able to hire these. Forget the, um, positions that were added. Where does that put you in terms of the staffing that you lost and the staffing that you just added? Are you net neutral or are you?
We're still, we're still three short.
Okay.
Um, of where we were approved in last year's budget. And so we, we had gotten down to twenty-three, and now we're up to twenty-nine, so it, it is positive. We're not, um, and, and of course, this time of year with vacations and people taking off to go on different things, there are operational challenges when you're down to a smaller staff and, but it's, it's fine. We have good people. We have five new people that are starting, and it'll work very, very well. Um, that's, but here again, projects, for instance, are not just labor, it's also materials. And when you're seeing the kind of delays, um, for instance, I would give you the Heritage Green example, when we have to relocate that new force main, they're desperately trying to find twelve-inch PVC, and they're afraid that it may be a six-month delay. They're trying to pull from everywhere they can just to get twelve-inch PVC, um, because it's just not something that's readily available off the shelf, which is unusual. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, Director Stahl.
Thank you.
Do we have Mr. Greenville?
Mr. Greenville is not with us this evening. I see, uh, Martha Vess, who's our accounting manager, is on the call. Uh, we don't have a report posted to the agenda. I believe you all have met Martha. Yes. Uh, but we will be working with Martha to try to get something back to you guys next month.
Okay. Okay, so that brings us to legislation.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, ordinance twenty-two dash eleven, stormwater management illicit discharge ordinance for consideration of adoption, and an ordinance concerning stormwater management illicit discharge ordinance for the purpose of amending chapter one sixty-seven, stormwater management, to accommodate the illicit discharge ordinance required by the state of Maryland.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Do I have, so we are adopting this, do I have a motion?
Uh, madam, uh, just Councilman Jenkins from Ward 4. I would make a motion for the adoption of, uh, ordinance number twenty-two dash eleven, stormwater management illicit discharge ordinance. Hold a second.
The move improperly seconded. No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, Council, ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen, revised chapter sixteen, design review board for consideration of adoption, and ordinance concerning design review board code revision for the purpose of amending chapter sixteen, design review. Revised the composition appointment in terms of the design review board, rules, quorum, and meeting for the design review board in all matters generally relating to the design review board and the design, and the design review board, to design review and the design review board, excuse me.
This is for adoption. Do I have a motion? They're moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, item four point three, resolution twenty-two dash seventeen, landscape and trash pickup service agreement. It's for consideration for adoption. It's a resolution concerning landscaping and trash pickup service agreement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement for landscaping and trash pickup service.
This is for consideration and adoption. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, La Plata, I'm sorry, wrong one, uh, twenty-two dash seventeen, landscape and trash pickup service agreement of consideration.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, resolution twenty-two eighteen, La Plata Police Department Drone Program for Consideration of Adoption. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Drone Program for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into professional services contract for drone pilot training for officers of the La Plata Police Department, and for the procurement of drones and drone support equipment for the La Plata Police Department Drone Program.
This is for consideration and adoption. Do I have a motion?
I, I make a motion for, for the adoption of, uh, resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, La Plata Police Department Drone Program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
This is, uh, ARPA funding.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, resolution twenty-two dash nineteen, La Plata Police Department All-Terrain Vehicle Purchase for the Consideration of Adoption. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department All-Terrain Vehicle Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement of an all-terrain vehicle for the La Plata Police Department. And Madam Mayor, if you will entertain, uh, we did receive, the quote had expired in the original resolution that was, uh, included with the agenda, uh, listed an amount of thirty-eight thousand, forty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Uh, we received an updated quote today, and the new total, and the new quote, uh, comes to a thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, seven dollars and seven cents. I believe it's about a four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty-dollar difference between the two quotes, but wanted to bring that to your attention due to the expiration of the initial quote that was brought to you at a work session, uh, for your consideration.
We kind of thought that the, um, quote would expire. So, um, with the amended, um, resolution, with the price being thirty-eight, five oh seven, oh seven, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the resolution twenty-two dash nineteen for the increased quote on the purchase of the vehicles with La Plata Police Department All-Terrain Vehicles. One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to new business, um, commission reports. I'm Councilman Goldsmith.
Nothing to report for this month.
Councilman Trolinger?
I have no report.
So, um, for the planning commission, we have a reappointment of, um, John Mudd, and I'm bringing that to the council tonight for approval. Any discussions?
So the recommendation is that, uh, to, to extend his term, what, for another?
Two years.
Two years, and he will remain as vice chair?
Vice chair.
Okay.
Madam.
You need a motion for that?
I make a motion that we, uh, extend, uh, John Moore, John Mudd's appointment on the planning commission.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Um, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, uh, again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. The Parkland Recreation Commission didn't meet in, in July, but they will be meeting in August.
Thank you. Upcoming events, Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Well, still excited about the Friday night concerts. They will go until August twenty-seventh, and we had, we have had some amazing bands. So, uh, I look forward to spending the next four Fridays out there, uh, with our citizens. September ninth, uh, currently, we are slated to have WGTS come down and have a big concert here. Um, so more information will be coming out, uh, soon. Uh, two things, just remember, please support National Night Out, which is on Tuesday, and then there is, um, the Small Business Association is having a summer stroll in the town, and they are asking everyone to join them on August fourth from five to eight PM. In downtown La Plata, there's going to be a- In downtown La Plata, there's going to be a bingo, five hundred dollars in bingo prizes and bingo is in quotes. So it's some type of card that you have to get stamped. And it's always so important to support our local businesses. They depend on our, on us and I think this is a fun way to do that. And that's all I have for this month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other things for discussion tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good job, Madam Mayor, pro town. Guys, have a great week.
I'm going to close meeting.